Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order today's Thursday, August 8th, meeting of the Missoula Board of County Commissioners. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have at least one public announcement. Lauren Miller, would you like to come on up and talk to us about zip lines?
Lauren Miller, Planning with Community and Planning Services. Just an update from staff. We did receive a proposal for a proposed zip line facility off of Big Flat Road. That proposal is a special exception, so goes to the Board of Adjustment for consideration. We have been in conversation with the applicant, and he believes that with all of the public comment we've received and needing some more information to address the concerns that were brought up, that the hearing is postponed for right now until further notice. So there will not be a hearing on it in August. We will notify the residents appropriately and will postpone the hearing until a later date and let everyone know when that is scheduled for.
Great. Thanks, Lauren. Any other staff announcements? Okay, seeing none. Just a few housekeeping items. Folks, please silence your cell phones if you have them. If you didn't, as you were coming in the room, please do so as you exit. There's a sign-in sheet in the back that just keeps us abreast of who's here and how to spell your names if you end up testifying. And please keep your comments to three minutes or less and address the chair with your comments. So to begin with, we offer a time where folks can offer public comment on items not on the agenda. We have six public hearings today. If your comments relate to any of those items on the agenda, please hold off and comment at the appropriate time. But now is your opportunity. If there's anything you want to comment on that's not on the agenda, come on up to the microphone. I see one person rising in the back. Who's this going for the sign-in sheet? Okay, false alarm. Okay, seeing none. Our current claims list, and this would be claims received by the Commissioner's Office from July 25th through July 31st of 2019, totals $1,998,668.71. And as I try to remind folks, if you're interested in the specific claims that total up to that amount, you can go on to the electric packet for today's agenda and click on that particular item, and that will pull up the list of all of our expenditures. So to begin with, we have, as I say, six public hearings. I will open the first public hearing. This is on the proposed Jetty Road petition, and we'll begin with a staff report from Shira Scott.
Shira Scott, Chief Deputy Clerk and Recorder. The Clerk and Recorder's Office received a petition to alter a public right-of-way called Jetty Road. It's located in the northwest corner of Section 29, Township 20 North, Range 16 West, beginning at Highway 83 South of the south boundary, sorry, of Highway 83, South of the south boundary, in the northwest quarter, the northwest quarter, and ending near the northwest quarter of Section 29. The petition meets all of the content requirements set forth in statute. It's been signed by at least 10 or more freeholders within the Missoula County Road District. All of the affected landowners have been notified, and we have met our publication requirements.
Okay, thank you. Steve Nyde, is there a viewer's report for this that you'd like to present, or any comments you'd like to provide?
Well, Dave, I would, but you're jumping ahead. We haven't done the viewing on this yet.
Ah, okay.
I'm gonna let Ken Jenkins, who I saw in the audience, present, and then we'll schedule the viewing. And I'll go ahead and suggest that since Juanita and I are going next Thursday up to Sealy Lake, we may want to extend that trip if time allows and pick up on Jetty.
Excellent. Thanks. Yes, I did indeed jump ahead of myself. So would the applicant or applicant's representative like to say a few words?
Good afternoon. For the record, Ken Jenkins. I'm with Montana Northwest Company. So, yeah, we submitted the petition. I think if you can kind of zero in on this piece of property, you can see the current county road that runs diagonal northwesterly, somewhat parallel to the highway. So that's about a quarter of a mile of county road that if we alter, or if we're successful in this petition to alter the road, it would come off the highway up at the north end, right, yeah, at the north end of the property. So the benefits to the county and probably the public would be that it would eliminate about a quarter mile of county road maintenance that is currently being done. The second thing would be that the county road that's there now is sort of what you would call a grandfathered, non-standard county road. It's not very wide, not the kind of county road that you would see with new construction today. The, there are, I think, some increments to this process that I'm hoping that we can work our way through with maybe some sort of a conditional, because ultimately, this new section of road that would tie in further north, coming off of the highway, ultimately, we would need to have an approach permit from the highway department. We went down that path with the highway department. They're not willing to act on the approach permit until the county is done doing their thing. And so, you know, we could perhaps kind of be getting ourselves into an endless loop here. But, and then the second thing is, the 300 feet or whatever of new road that would have to be built, we would submit engineered plans to County Public Works. They would have to approve those plans. That new piece of road would have to be built to county standards, inspected, and signed off by County Public Works. And so, all of that needs to happen before we erase the current existing county road. And so therefore, what I'm hoping is that we can get to a comfort level in this process where we know, one way or another, is this going to happen or not happen. And, you know, perhaps even a conditional approval type of thing, because there are other steps to this process that will have to happen. And I'd certainly field any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission?
So just to be clear, then, you and your company would cover the cost of building the new road and erasing the old road?
The landowner would. We would just be involved in the design end and the process of getting it there, yeah.
I bet the landowner would be okay if you, your company, covered the costs, so...
Wasn't part of our deal.
Okay. So this is an initial, thanks, Ken, an initial public hearing. We'll keep this open until we have a road viewing, or viewing of the proposed change in right-of-way up there. And then we will have another public hearing to take action. So I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to comment on this? Come on up to the microphone, sir. It looks like it's on already, so please state your name for the record.
Hello, I'm Lawrence Garlick. I own three properties on Jetty Road downstream from this proposal. And we had some questions about why this petition is going as far as it is. So the process, and maybe you can answer them, but I'll suggest what these questions are. First of all, there doesn't seem to be a process for not agreeing to this proposal, to this petition. Many of us seated here have not signed this petition. And we've been approached, but did not agree to sign the petition. So since we are road landowners, we're wondering why the petition is moving this far. On the petition, the landowners' name below have thus far not given consent to the proposed abandonment or alteration, and that's blank. So there are over three landowners who have not signed this petition. So we wonder why this petition has gotten this far. We had a question, and I think we know the answer to this, but on the advantages described, it said to bring the approach to the northern end of Salote's property will allow for open and undisturbed land. I assume this just means it's not built upon, or is this actually a commitment to keep this land undisturbed? And we don't know the answer to that, but maybe, maybe Ken can react to that. So after the second signage page, the signatures were verified, or under the signatures verified, it says the following signatures cannot be verified. And I believe those are relative landowners and would be consenters. So I don't know why it moved ahead this far. There are inaccuracies on the road relocation adjacent landowner map. Two of my properties don't show up on that map, for instance, and they have Jetty Road addresses. And on the last page, I think it's the last page, page 13 of 13, under adjacent landowners, it says, immediately, it says Gary Nelson, number three, is the only consenting landowner on this list. So why is this processed this far, given that level of consent? So that's our major question at this stage of the process. So if you could help clarify, or Ken can help clarify, that'd be great.
Thank you. And we'll see if we can get some answers for you, sir, in a minute. Additional public comment. Anyone else like to come up and, I sense folks might have traveled a great distance. Oh, yes, okay.
Okay, Section 4 of this right here, it says...
And ma'am, could you please...
Mary Talbot, Jetty Road.
Okay, thank you.
The county may not alter or abandon a county right-of-way used to access private land if the access benefits two or more landowners unless all the landowners agree to the petition. Does that mean if there's anybody against this, it will not be done? Okay, I'm against it.
Thank you. Additional public comment. Hang on just a second, Steve. Come on up. We'll try to answer some of those questions in just a moment here.
My concern is...
And could you state your name for the record?
Oh, sorry. Pamela Garlick, Jetty Road.
Thank you.
I'm concerned about the proposed change to the entrance of Jetty Road, moving it down. Where it is right now, when you pull out, you can see a long distance to the right and to the left. The cars go 70 miles an hour faster. We have logging trucks up there. If you move it down to where it's proposed, if you look up to the right, there's a rise, and the visibility is very poor. And I have concerns about the safety of cars, and there'll be everybody on Jetty Road in and out of there. So I'm concerned about the safety of that location.
Thank you. And I'll speak to that one item there. One of the pieces of the process, and I jumped the gun a little when I started out, thinking we'd already done this, but we are yet to make a field visit, a site visit, and that would include one county commissioner, in this case Commissioner Juanita Verro, and our county surveyor, Steve Nyde, will visit the location in person to get a feel for exactly what you're describing in terms of safety issues that might be at play. Additional public comment. Come on up, sir.
My name is James Craig, and I live, have a place on Jetty Road. I've had it there since 1980. I'm opposed to this proposal because I have not personally been notified on anything on this petition. I have been, I'm one of those summer people, but I've been on Jetty Road since the 1st of June, and I've yet to receive any information. If it hadn't been for my neighbor asking me if I got some information, I wouldn't know anything about this hearing. I would have been ignored on the property. So my biggest concern is, how can it get to that point when everybody hasn't been notified and the commissioners haven't got the information that everybody's been notified of this proposal? That's one concern. The second concern is, I agree with Pamela, the egress, I mean, the exit and entrance where the new proposed road is, in my opinion, is very dangerous. Because like she said, the cars and trucks are going by there 70 miles an hour, and they don't slow down for anything. So I am against this proposal.
Thank you, sir. Additional public comment. Come on up.
Okay, we got, Mary Talbot, Jetty Road. We got our certified letters. It said the meeting was going to be across the street in Room B14 at 2:00. We're sitting over there. If I hadn't went upstairs and found out this meeting had been moved, we would have not known anything.
Thank you for letting us know. I apologize if that was what the announcement was. That was okay. We will do better in the future on that. Any additional public comment, then? Let's see if we can get a few answers from staff and the applicant's representative. So I want to hear from Shira Scott with our Clerk and Recorder's Office on just the process piece of this. I saw you darting to the front, Steve, so if you have something you want to jump in with and clarify, come on up. I won't, I won't hold you back this time. And I should just say to folks that we are bound by state law in terms of the process. So if the process is not exactly what we might ideally like, sometimes our hands are tied by virtue of state law. So go ahead, Steve.
So I heard several questions. One was the notification process, which I'll let Shira speak to. One was the safety issue of the new proposed alignment. I'm not an engineer. I don't think Juanita is. But when MDT goes out to issue that approach permit, they will do an engineering study, an analysis of site distance, et cetera. If they don't feel it's safe, then they won't issue the permit. So that should address your fears there. In terms of certain landowners not signing the petition, I can answer that in that state law only requires 10 freeholders within the county. Freeholders being landowners who are currently paying taxes in the county. So we always suggest that the local residents most directly affected by the action sign the petition. That shows the commissioners and the public good faith and agreement, but that's not necessarily required. Any 10 people can, any 10 freeholders can sign the petition. And I may be forgetting another question that I haven't addressed.
Let's hear from Shire on the process, and maybe something else will come to mind, Steve. Okay, we'll give you one more shot here.
I would, Lawrence Garlick again. If the new exit from Jetty Road is much less safe than the current exit, I'd say that that is an issue, not just for assessing whether a new entrance or exit to the highway is safe or not. So why would we approve something that makes a less safe entrance and exit to Jetty Road?
Okay, thank you, sir. And just to follow up on Steve's comments, per state law, and for better or for worse, someone who does not live adjacent to Jetty Road, 10 freeholders in Missoula County, and that could include presumably someone in French Town or Lolo even, could be a part of the petition, and there's no protest provision part of this. So we are seeing this before us today because we have, yes, ma'am, we normally don't have multiple...
Pamela Garlick, Jetty Road. I feel like we're being railroaded.
Would you like to elaborate?
So you just, we wanted a clarification on the petition form about the signatures. But what you just said, I mean, Kathy Talbot thought that if someone disagreed on the road, that that would actually have some impact. But what you just said is that any 10 people in Missoula County, 100 miles away from Jetty Road, can say, fine, change the road. But the people who actually live on the road have no recourse whatsoever. So my question is, is there recourse to this? Or is it just these 10 people from who knows where get to make this decision?
So let me clarify, then. Let's go to the expert in our Clerk and Recorder's Office as far as the process goes. Thank you, ma'am. And we'll get some public comment in from you in just a moment. So this is all part of a state-defined process. So it is coming before us today for consideration, and we will take very seriously the fact that folks are disagreeing with what is being proposed. But to get it to this point, per state law, and it might not be satisfactory, and at this point, you might want to be considering talking to your state legislators to change state law if it's not acceptable that a proposal can come to us like this by virtue of just 10 freeholders anywhere in Missoula County, because we totally get it. Today, we're opening the public hearing. We'll do a road viewing. We'll take your input into consideration. And anyone else between now and our next public hearing, we want to hear from folks. But by way of due process, folks are following state law to bring this proposal to us today. Commissioner Slotnick, and then Shira.
Thanks, Dave. And just, and I'm saying just what Dave was saying. I just want to say it super clearly. Bringing a petition forth and having that petition approved are different things. Certainly, 10 people anywhere can sign their name and the petition can come forth. That doesn't mean this board votes for it. There's a really big difference there. The recourse is speak up, come to the next meeting, bring more people, and have an influence on the decision. This is not a decision being made other than, we're going to go look, and MDT would look. That's all, that's all that's happening right now.
Thanks. Shira, would you like to reiterate what the process is for a petition like this?
Absolutely. So Shira Scott, Chief Deputy Clerk and Recorder. First, I wanted to apologize. I did check the notice, and you're absolutely correct. I made a clerical error and sent you to the wrong location. So I apologize for that, and we'll update that.
It's very obvious that other people knew that it was going to be here, but we didn't.
Yeah. I'm very sorry. It's probably just people have come to these meetings before, so I'm sorry for that. So the process is, for our office, we received a petition to alter or abandon or establish a county road. As the Commissioner said, there are, Missoula County is one road district, and statute provides that 10 freeholders within that road district sign the petition. It also lays forth what requirements there are for the petition to be considered. I know you brought up the question of those not agreeing to the petition and not having their names listed, and that was actually in that attachment, that only one of the landowners agreed or signed the petition. And we felt that that meant the, we meant that, that that met the statutory requirements, that they said only one of the landowners that's listed, and all of those affected landowners approved of the petition. And that's on that final page there. And I can show...
And folks, let me just clarify. I'll let you have one more shot here, but generally, we only allow folks to have one opportunity at the mic for public comment, but go ahead for clarification.
It's a simple one. So if we disagree and don't approve, what is the process for us to get that onto paper and into your hands?
I think you're participating in that process right now. You can also submit written comment, but expressing your opinion to the commissioners at this point is the process for contesting.
And what does the text in Number 4 on the procedure for establishment, alteration, and abandonment of county roads mean?
And I'm going to have Steve Nyde, if you don't mind, speak to, yes, I have it pulled up, yeah.
And Steve, could you read...
Unless I don't understand the word "all," could you read what... All of the landowners agree to the petition. It says, "The county may not alter or abandon a county right-of-way used to access private land if the access benefits two or more landowners unless all of the landowners agree to the petition." Steve?
Yeah, I'm, leave this right here, because this, I'm going to have to say, is an error. And I am absolut...
Oh, that's not...
Folks, please bear with us.
I'm glad I brought the actual statutory language here, because it says, not the same as this. It says, "The board may not abandon a county road right-of-way, blah, 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 blah." This says, "May not alter or abandon." So, yeah, there's, there is a difference between the language in what we, the county, puts forward for the public to consume and what state law is, and that's, that's bad on us. That language led you to believe that this could not go process, go forward if you didn't want it to go forward. And that's actually not the case. The law says, "We can't abandon." It doesn't say, "We can't alter." So I will reiterate what the commissioners have already said. You guys being here right now, today, and lodging your displeasure and disagreement goes miles towards them making their decision. And if there are other landowners that feel similarly, get a letter from them here or get them here in person. But this decision is not being made today by any means.
So...
Is it abandoned?
No, no, it's not.
A petition is being brought forth, but no vote is being made today.
So the question, let me reiter, ma'am...
It'll be altered. It'll be just changed from one location to another. It won't go away, because that would, that would eliminate your legal access to your property. That's why the law says we can't do that.
And so that it's on the record, Steve, could you reiterate or restate the question that was just posed?
Which question?
Well, there seemed to be some confusion over whether the road would be abandoned versus altered.
Okay, yeah, the question was whether the road would be abandoned or altered. No, the petition is to alter the location of the legal right-of-way from one position to another. We in no way would allow the complete abandonment of your legal access. We would want, if there is going to be a change, we would want it to continue to provide you legal access and not in any way be worse legal access.
Thank you, Steve. So would the applicant or anyone else like to speak at this time? Come on up, and please state your name.
Hi, my name is Grace Saloti, and I'm the one that proposed all of this. And I'm sorry, I made a very big... And I'm sorry, I made a very big effort to go up and down Jetty Road as many times as I could. I work seven days a week, and I did catch Kathy in the store and talked- And talk, no, we talked in the-
Okay, we're not going to get into back and forth with the audience right now.
And I called Garlic's out of town, and I talked to them out of respect. And I'm sorry, I missed you. I went up and down Jetty Road, and you told me I missed you because you guys were gone that weekend. Yeah. So I'm sorry. I made an attempt to try to avoid that out of respect for them, because I was also told that it didn't matter if I went to them or not. I could just do it without that. But I really respect everybody, and I wanted to go to them in person before they got a notice. And that was the right thing to do, because I would have expected the same thing. And I, there's no one being blocked from entering their property. The easement, to me, makes more sense. I have this huge highway, which you'll see when you come and look at it yourself and evaluate it, and you'll see the whole thing. I will say no more, because you'll see it when you come. But I just wanted to clarify that I did make a big attempt to, and Arlen back there, I talked with him several times, went to his house. He was very easy to get ahold of, but some of you weren't as easy. And again, I apologize, I didn't see a vehicle where you were when I went down Jetty Road.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone who has not spoken who would like to comment on this item? And again, this is, ah, Mr. Jenkins, do you have something you'd like to clarify?
I will be very quick. Ken Jenkins with Montana Northwest. I just wanted to, there was a question about some language in the application about open and undisturbed. That maybe was poorly worded. A benefit to this property would be the, if the road is relocated as proposed. It's a long, narrow property that runs north-south, and the county road runs diagonal north-south up through it. If, if the new proposed road were put in place, it certainly enhances the property, I guess is what we were trying to say, opens it up. The, to address the, and I think Steve maybe mentioned this, the highway department has, they will do an engineering study. We were trying to get them to do that before we started this process. This process makes no sense if the highway department isn't willing to give us an approach. And so I, there are some drawbacks to the approach that's there now. The road comes in at a diagonal, there's a driveway that comes in right at the highway intersection in the same location. I think that, and again, it's going to be up to highway department engineers and the county public works department, because we are proposing a county road, to look at the safety issue. I, having looked at it on site, I've stood where the approach will be. You guys will see it when you're up there. I don't want to put words in the highway department's mouth, but it seems to me there's pretty good sight distance. And a perpendicular intersection coming into the highway certainly is more, closer to meeting the engineering standards that you would have to meet for an approach than what is in place now, so. Just wanted to address those things, and that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who has not spoken who would like to comment on this? Okay, when would we like to schedule? So Steve, you will be traveling up in those parts with Winita next week on the 15th. So Emmy, any suggestions on the next public hearing date? Probably not the 22nd, which will be a big day.
We could squeeze it on September 5th, or October 3rd, really, after that, because you guys are going to be gone for a while.
Ken, September 5th, would that, for you and your crew, would that work? It would not work for Steve Nyde. Okay, I guess we're, Octo- October, what was the date in October?
October 3rd.
October 3rd? Steve, October 3rd? Ken, October 3rd? Okay, so we will reconvene in this room, 2:00 PM on October 3rd to take this up again. Between now and then, there will be a road viewing up there that's open to the public, I believe. And that will be next Thursday with Commissioner Vero and County Surveyor Steve Nyde.
Is there an opportunity for neighbors to submit written comment?
Absolutely. And we encourage, if you're pro-con indifferent, and even though you've testified today, if you wanted to put your comments on paper, that would be immensely helpful for us, because we are the final decision-making body on this. We're not making a decision today. We want to hear from folks and hear what they have to say. One more question? Come on up to the microphone, please.
I want to be there when it happens, so I need somebody to call me. So I will be there.
If you could-
Can I give you my phone number? Okay.
Sure, or Steve right, right in the back there, that would probably work best. He would be happy to keep you in the loop. Okay, thanks, everyone, for making the trek here to testify. We will keep this public hearing open until October 3rd. And again, thank you for participating and offering your thoughts. Okay, we will move into our second public hearing today, which I will open, and this is on a resolution regulating parking on McCauley Lane. And we'll begin with a staff report from Eric Dixon.
Thank you, Eric Dixon, county engineer. In April of this year, the commission approved the McCauley Acres II subdivision, which is a five-lot subdivision accessing off of existing McCauley Lane, which is a 60-foot-wide dedicated public county easement. That subdivision was approved with a number of conditions of approval, one of which was that a no-parking zone be established. With the design standards that were considered for McCauley Lane for the number of lots that were proposed, surface width of 24 feet was approved. And at 24 feet wide, that does not accommodate on-street parking. Being a public easement, the commission has the right or the ability to establish a no-parking zone by resolution. So as a matter of the conditions of approval and the existing state law, that's the reason that this resolution is being proposed at this time. So in order to meet the conditions of approval, staff recommends that the resolution be adopted.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there a, anything from the applicant or applicant's representative?
For the record, Dale McCormick with Professional Consultants, representing TITAM LLC. Good afternoon, commissioners. I want to thank Eric for his help in this process. This was a new process for me, and it was good to be able to sort that out. And now I know how to do it, next time we have to do it. So I'm just here to ask that you support the proposal for no parking. As Eric described, it's a 24-foot-wide road, and there's not enough room to accommodate on-street parking. So, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment on this particular item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions from the commission?
Or a motion would be in order.
I'm just wondering, is there anything that we're not asking, Eric?
No, I don't believe so. This is a pretty straightforward process, you know, for a road that really doesn't exist yet to be going through the resolution for no parking. It's sort of backwards from the usual process, where we identify a problem and react to it with the resolution for no parking. In this case, with a narrow roadway, this is a step to avoid future problems. So it's just establishing the zone before the road is built, so we can avoid those problems in the future.
Great, thanks.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion to approve the resolution? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's approved. Thank you. So our next public hearing is on a proposed Clearwater Junction subdivision phasing plan extension. And we will begin with a staff report from Tim Worley.
Good afternoon, commissioners. For the record, I'm Tim Worley with CAPS. This is a request to extend the phasing plan for Clearwater Junction subdivision, which is a 20-acre subdivision located east of Clearwater Junction. It's divided into three phases. When the letter for the request came in on July 3rd, the request was to extend it to July 11, 2022 for Phase 1, July 11, 2024 for Phase 2, and July 11, 2026 for Phase 3. The regulations limit phasing plan extensions to three total years for a phase subdivision. So using that horizon, the subdivision would be impacted for Phases 1 and 2 only as far as extending the phasing window. So our recommendation based on the regulations is to extend the final plat submittal deadlines for Phases 1 and 2. Phase 3 would be unaffected since it already goes out to July 11, 2022. So commissioners, your motion is that the phasing plan amendment for Clearwater Junction subdivision be conditionally approved to allow a final plat submittal deadline of July 11, 2022 for Phases 1 and 2.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Richards, would you like to say a few words?
John Richards. This preliminary approval was in 2008, which was right about the height of the subdivision boom in Missoula County. And everybody was worried that it was going to be a huge influx of people. Nobody realized there was going to be a 10-year recession in between. And the phasing plan, under preliminary approval, I could escrow the money if someone wanted to purchase one of the properties until the final plat is approved. Some of the conditions of approval are totally unreasonable. And I've visited with Tim about those over the years, we've talked about it. But the, one of the things is a six-foot sidewalk that's approximately 1,500 feet long, next to a 32-foot county road. And this is out in the middle of game range, basically. The elk travel back and forth across the highway there all the time. And it's a area that, the sidewalk is going nowhere. There's nothing on either end of it to hook the sidewalk to. So some of, I just wanted to bring the commissioners aware, because none of you were on that board at that time. So some of the conditions, I want to visit with staff to see if we can't get a resolution that works for everybody, mainly the purchasers of the property, if and when they purchase. To have to purchase a sidewalk, I've shown it several times over the years, and every single person said, "What? A sidewalk?" So I just wanted to bring the commissioners up to speed on the requirements. And going forward, we may want to change some of the conditions. So that's my only comments. I think this gives us some time to talk about it, so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment on this? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Questions from the commission, I'll break the ice. So basically, Tim, the 2022 date is the maximum that would be allowed by state law. Is that correct?
Yes, and John can always come back in 2022 and request another extension.
Thank you.
I should, I should point out, it's actually within our regulations that he has the three-year window, based primarily on the Legacy Ranch case down in Ravalli County.
Got it, okay, thank you. Questions or a motion?
I move that the phasing plan amendment for Clearwater Junction subdivision be conditionally approved to allow a final plat submittal deadline of July 11, 2022 for Phases 1 and 2. And I really hope you have your sidewalk discussion.
Second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, continuing on, our fourth public hearing today is on the proposed Weinberger family transfer. And we will begin with a staff report by Lauren Miller.
Lauren Miller, planner with Community and Planning Services. This request today is to utilize the family transfer exemption and to create one parcel from this tract to be transferred to the applicant's wife. The tract is located in the Potomac area, just south of Highway 200. The tract right now is approximately 20 acres and does not have any permanent structures on site. There's a hookup for an RV currently on site. The tract is unzoned and is designated open and resource, one dwelling unit per 40 acres. This proposed transfer would exceed that density that's recommended from the land use designation. The proposed parcel configuration is shown here. The tracts would each be a total of 10.05 acres in size approximately. Tract 1 would remain in ownership by the applicant himself, and the tract 2 would be transferred to his wife, Linda. The applicant has indicated in the application that the tracts are to be used for residential purposes by the recipient. The proposal was sent to county agencies for review. We didn't receive any comments of concern from a majority of the agencies. The Missoula City County Health Department did note that it appears at least one of these parcels would need to go through sanitation and subdivision review per MCA 76-4. And potentially, it would be likely that groundwater monitoring would be required. The rebuttable presumptions and general evasion criteria were reviewed, and those that were triggered are noted in bold in the staff report. The rebuttable presumption triggered by this proposal was if the landowner intends to divide land for the purpose of a gift or sale to the landowner's spouse and/or minor children. The intended recipient today is the landowner's spouse. The general evasion criteria that was triggered by this proposal was if the proposal was incompatible with the growth policy. And as I stated earlier, this was designated open and resource, one dwelling unit per 40 acres, so that would exceed that density that's recommended. With that, staff is recommending that the request by Lawrence Weinberger to utilize the family transfer- the family transfer exemption to create and transfer one parcel be approved. And I have a few questions for you. You look like you're already at the mic, ready to go. So if you want to state your name for the record?
Hey, Weinberger.
Did you buy the property with the intent of dividing it?
No.
Do you or your transferees intend to transfer the property within the next year?
No.
Have you talked to anyone at the county about going through subdivision review?
No.
Will the property be developed? And will the recipient of the property be residing on the property?
I'm not sure how to answer that. So currently, we have an RV site on that property, and we are living in that RV through the summer months.
Can you bring it up, Lauren?
I'm sorry.
What was that?
Can you display the...
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry. There you go.
Anyway, so we currently live on that property in the summer in our RV, and then the other, you know, if we can split it into two, the other one would just sit there until we die, which will hopefully be the way down the road, and then the boys can have it when we leave. So it's just setting up to make it as easy as possible to give each of the boys 10 acres without any sort of hassle.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my question and my staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. And we might have a few questions for you. Is there... I want you to stay right there. I doubt anyone else is going to be jumping to the mic. Anyone else want to comment on this? This is a public hearing. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. So I guess, could you elaborate a little bit? So you're transferring a tract to your wife, but the real intent is that you will have two tracts for your kids at some point in time?
Right. We don't... I'm sorry, go ahead and finish your question. Was there more than...
No, that's basically it. And how old are your kids?
They're in their twenties. Twenty... Don't embarrass me like that. Twenty-three and twenty-six. So, yeah, so the idea is just that we would be able to pass it on to them whenever we pass, but we planned to... We want to hold the property for ourselves and use it, and we hope to build a house on the 110-acre tract. And then when we are gone, we'll just transfer it to the kids.
And is there a reason why you're doing this right now rather than at some point farther down the line?
Because I could die tomorrow, or we could die tomorrow. And we just feel that this is the most surefire way of getting it. You know, each one of them getting an equal share and no hassles, and don't end up with a family in court over some sort of will trying to divide it later on.
Okay, thanks. Other questions?
Yeah, Lauren, I don't know if this is the right map, but can you zoom out so we can kind of see the, yeah, the platting development in the area? Awesome, thanks.
Yep, you're welcome.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
I guess it's just a question for Lauren. So if there's zoning here, what's unzoned, but the...
The land use designation, yes.
Is one per 40.
One per 40, correct, which, just as a reminder, you know, that land use is a guiding document. So if this were to go through subdivision review, of course, you know, low density, but that open and resource, of course, we see designated on a lot of tracts that have already been developed that exceeds that recommendation. So really, just kind of a guiding document for how this area were to develop, so.
But I would say that the Supreme Court has weighed in fairly strongly that substantial compliance with the growth policy is to be taken seriously. So Lauren, could you speak to if this was to go, just given what you know about the parcel in question, if this was to go through subdivision review, what types of issues might come up or might need mitigation or conditions that would not be a part of just a straight-up family transfer?
Yeah, so I think one of the things, of course, more information in terms of, you know, septic health sanitation approval would be something that would be looked into. As the City County Health Department noted, that groundwater monitoring may be needed in this area. So of course, getting approval for sanitation. It seems to be a pretty straightforward property in terms of, you know, you have legal access from two different roadways there. So access to the property doesn't seem like too much of an issue. The big thing I could see is potentially ag as a consideration out in this area. I did not look at what the soils were on this parcel here, but I know, you know, kind of historically how this area is used. That would be something considered as well. Of course, you're not, fire danger-wise, it seems pretty low in this area as well. So through subdivision review, just looking at it, you know, I don't see any major glaring issues right off the bat with it, but.
Another question for Mr. Weinberger. Given that you said the goal here is to get 10 acres to each son, could you do a family transfer where you give 10 acres to one son and then put the other son's name on the 10 acres with you on it, so that's who has it? It just, it sort of looks from the outside right now, if I'm being, excuse me, being cynical, that this is just a way to set it up so you guys can sell off 10 acres without having to go through minor subdivision review.
That's a question. The answer is no. That's not the reason for this.
So why not do a family transfer and give 10 acres to one son and put your other son's name on the remaining 10 acres, and then you're done. You don't have to wait till you meet your demise. They've got this property.
We want the property to totally remain in our name, or, you know, until we're gone. Just, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure I understand the legal way of doing what you're talking about there. It's not a familiar process to me, but this, to me, seems like the most straightforward and understandable way of making sure that we can control the property throughout our lives, and then when we're gone, pass it on to them.
And please understand, I think part of the reason for the question is that we've gotten burned in the past by folks who have stood here and have been absolutely sincere, but ended up flipping the parcel that was transferred to one of their family members. And in this case, since you've indicated the ultimate goal is that your kids are going to have the property, why not do a family transfer to one of the kids for the entirety of the property and either keep the other parcel in your wife and your name, or add them to the deed?
I was going to ask Mac if that's, is that a legal thing? Did I have that right? Could you give 10 acres to one son, put the other son's name on the deed with you, and then you would have effectively done a family transfer where you've given the property to your two boys, which I commend you, it's a great thing to do. You would still have control over your property, and it would look a whole lot more like a family transfer and not look like a way to evade minor subdivision review and sell off 10 acres.
So what you're proposing that would be to transfer property now into one son's name?
And then your other sons, and then, so 10 acres to one son, and then put your other son's name on the 10 acres with you?
Doesn't seem quite equitable to me. I mean, because...
They each get 10 acres.
Well, I know, but each of them, or they don't each get something now. I mean, it sounds like one son gets something now, and the other one gets something later when we die. Is that...
Well, presumably, neither of them are getting anything until you die.
That's what you said.
I understand that, but I mean, it sounds like you're saying that we would be, go ahead and carving out the 10 acres and giving it to one son now. I'm not sure how we would choose the one, but, and then the other son would be... It doesn't seem equitable to me. I'm sorry, I don't...
Lauren, I...
Yeah, sorry. So Commissioner Slotnick, I think one of the things that you're getting at as well that maybe seems less of an evasion is one of the things that, of course, is triggered that we always looked at, that's a pretty big one, is when you transfer to another spouse. That's, and that's really the one thing that was triggered, but that's obviously a big one. So maybe what you're getting at is it would maybe look less like evasion if it were to be, here's our division of land, this piece is going to a child, is maybe what you're getting at?
Exactly. And kind of feeling up, running off what you said was that the ultimate goal was to transfer this property to your sons after you guys move on, which would, I feel like you could do the same thing. It would just look a lot like a family transfer instead of looking like minor subdivision review. And my cynicism is fueled, as Dave pointed out, by us getting burned on this before, where it would be easy enough for someone who doesn't have your integrity to do the same thing, and then three weeks later, sell off that 10 acres. And they were able to successfully do that without going through a minor subdivision review. And the law says we're supposed to look for evasion of subdivision review. So this isn't us being spiteful, just us trying to follow the law.
I understand.
Mac, do you have anything to add?
No, I think it's largely your discretion.
Mac, is your microphone on?
There you go. I think it's largely up to your discretion. The Supreme Court has made very clear that there aren't any statutory guidelines right now that are in the Subdivision and Platting Act on whether this exemption will apply. So Missoula County has adopted Chapter 8, its subdivision regulations, to try to give some objective criteria. So it's just up to you to determine whether or not you believe that this meets the sniff test on an evasion question.
Okay, thank you. Yep. Go ahead. Yeah. Commissioner Slotnick.
Thanks, Dave. So this is from the statute on family transfers. "The exemption in Montana Code annotated, 'were not provided to allow a developer to create a division of land, which is for all intents and purposes nothing less than an unreviewed subdivision. Rather, they were provided to deal with exceptional circumstances under which full plenary subdivision review is unnecessary.'" That's the, I'm just reading this.
Chuck, I would clarify for the record, that's an Attorney General opinion.
Thank you.
Which does have the force of law until supplanted by a Supreme Court decision.
Thank you. So that's what the Attorney General said. So in this case, what would be the exceptional circumstances?
Well, unfortunately, exceptional circumstances has not been defined. I think my reading of this in context with the whole code is that this is supposed to be a narrowly construed exception, and that it's not supposed to be liberally granted. What the legislature wants you to do is follow the Subdivision and Platting Act unless there are these narrow exceptions where there's a good reason to not follow it. And so I think what the Attorney General is saying is you have to determine that there's a really good reason here. Otherwise, we should apply the Subdivision and Platting Act.
So what would that good reason be?
Well, the good reason is that, I mean, first off, we wouldn't want to give, we don't want to give any property away right now, right? I mean, we only want to give it away when we're gone. So we don't want to, you know, if we were to give, if we were to give one of our sons, I mean, we'd create a war immediately, give property to one son and not to the other. That is, that just, I think it would bother me if it was, if I was the recipient, or the non-recipient, I guess maybe would be the way I would put it. This just seems to me to be the most straightforward way of saying that both these guys will get equal amounts at, you know, at the same time, and, you know, no chance of one of them, whoever we give that to, they presumably could just do whatever they want with it, which means that then we would have possibly them selling it or whatever, and someone building a house on it, which we, of course, would not be all that crazy about.
Another legal question. Mac, could Mr. Weinberger get to what he wants through, and his wife wants through, a will?
So I don't think the will itself is going to be able to split the property. So when the will transfers, it's going to have to transfer the entire parcel unless you guys allow this exception, or it goes through subdivision.
Could the will say, the property goes to the two boys to be divided in half, and they have, and then those two young men would have to go through this process or some other process?
I don't believe that you can put a land use restriction like that through a will.
But could a, and I know this is not what you propose, but we're trying, we like to get to yes at times, and can a family transfer be to two individuals? So could the land be transferred in the name of both of his sons?
Yes. Yep, it's only when you are trying to transfer to others does the state law restrict you to only have one owner on that deed, but you can transfer to multiple people to the same property?
Same property.
Yes.
So certainly, from my sense, I can't necessarily speak for the other Commissioners, but if, again, the ultimate goal is to get your property, once you're underground or otherwise have left the face of this planet, to your kids, and one way to perhaps mitigate some of the concerns we have where a spouse, a living spouse, is just a mechanism to flip the property, even though I'm not questioning that that is your intent, if it was, if a transfer was made to both of your sons, you would avoid the situation of needing to flip the coin in terms of which one of them gets that one parcel. Your will could take care of the other parcel that you and your wife are occupying.
So you're saying transfer 10 acres to both of them, and then, well, but then it's, but then it's not...
And then at some point in time, they could opt, I mean, they could...
But then, but then those two are, you know, kind of, they're on, not kind of, they are then on the property together, which is not what we're hoping for. We're hoping to make sure that they each have their own piece, and that one doesn't have to rely on the other to do whatever, agree on it, to do whatever they're going to do with it and so forth.
Mac?
If they were both on both pieces, after you guys died, each boy could claim the other off of the piece, so then it would be one-on-one.
There you go.
Sorry, I'm cynical. My...
Quite a process, but...
But that would work.
Can...
I'm sorry, could you come to the microphone if you, and please state your name for the record?
Linda Nitz, and I'm the mom. And does that mean we would, our names would not be on the land, just their names would, when you transfer? I'm confused here. Because we don't want their names on the land right now.
Until they're dead and gone.
Exactly.
We want our names on it, and then once we're gone, then...
So you, okay, Commissioner Slotnick.
It's not a great, it might not be a great idea, but this could work. You could go through minor subdivision review, own two pieces of property, leave one to one boy, leave one to the other boy. In the meantime, you own both pieces, and then after you move on, each gets a piece.
And if we die tomorrow?
They each get a piece. Well, you got to go, okay, well, thinking, you'll make it through minor subdivision review before tomorrow. How long would that take, Lauren?
It would not happen tomorrow. I can tell you that much. Depending on, like I said, just looking at it, it looks like a pretty straightforward parcel to me. Anywhere from four to six months, potentially. Totally dependent on the situation and any problems that arise through that review process.
Each son would get one piece? Or you'd have, you two would own two separate pieces of property. In your will, you could will piece one to son one, piece two to son two. And in the meantime, create a will that gives it all to the two of them, and if something terrible happens between now and four to six months, they would just have to go to court and figure it out. But that would guarantee, that would absolutely guarantee each boy gets a piece after you move on, and would provide you with total control while you're alive.
Forgive me for being cynical, but when you say court, I immediately think that I don't see anything certain about that. When you talk about sending this thing into court, and I can be assured that it's going to happen a certain way, I just...
Well, that's just, that's just within the four to six months, but knock on wood, no tragedy. This will sail through, and then four to six months from now, each person, each boy gets one piece of property after you move on. No conflict. It would just...
But I would be quick to add that there is no guarantee going through subdivision review that, I mean, there would be a process involved there, and whether or not this body would approve the minor subdivision.
But as Lauren said, this doesn't look like a controversial minor subdivision.
I mean, and that's hard to, like you said...
Other than not substantially complying with the growth policy.
Right, right. So, I mean, that's just, I mean, I would have to look into it further, but just a broad interpretation from sitting here and looking at the parcel and researching it a little bit, that is my interpretation at this time. Ultimately, it would be a decision of the Commission and agency comment and everything, so.
Okay, thank you. You're getting your money's worth today. Additional comments?
I am not cynical in the way you guys might be. I'm more cynical from a parental, even though I'm not a parent, that I don't, I wouldn't want you to be burned by your sons, and you have... I wouldn't want you to be burned by your sons, and you have no idea how they will get along, if they even like each other, if you even like them, if they like you. And so I understand the, you know, the need for a family transfer, or that tool, and it makes sense to me in this case, so... but if... Lauren, if... you know what? I will just make that a motion, because I can't stand watching Lawrence do this. I feel bad for you. So I'm going to make a motion that's a request by Lawrence Weinberger to utilize a family transfer exemption to create and transfer one parcel to his wife Linda Nitz, as presented in the exemption application affidavit be approved.
I'll go ahead and second it, so we can have some debate. I mean, a couple things give me pause. One, the transfer to a spouse, and given the track record we've had with these things not always panning out as intended, with... even though we know your ultimate goal is to get these tracks into the hands of your son, as we speak, I can point to family transfers elsewhere in Missoula County where it's unfolding exactly opposite to what was pitched to us in this very room. So that gives me pause. The other real worry I have is relative to the growth plan and the open and resource designation. Even though we're not... even if this was subdivision review, we would not be making a decision based solely on the growth policy. As I mentioned earlier, the Montana Supreme Court has stated very clearly that substantial compliance with the growth policy is important. And if we're talking one per 40 density, and tracks that are now one quarter of that size, one per 10 acres, that's quite a bit out of whack with our policy documents. So those are two elements that really give me pause, that would, at least for me, argue for this going through minor subdivision review. Further comments from the Commission? Discussion?
Just... I get the... you want to nail this down in the short term, and it could take four to six months to go through subdivision review. And there is this question of exceptional circumstances. I mean, I hate to speak about such grave things here, but if one or the two of you was in a position where you feel like you might not be here in four to six months, that would be a pretty serious exceptional circumstance, special circumstance. But it sounds like, me listening to you, you can get exactly where you want to be through subdivision review, and then a will, in a much cleaner way than what you're proposing. The downside is, it takes some time, it costs some money, and you go through yet another process. But it would actually ultimately get you exactly where you want to go. Now, if you were to say, "We can't bank on four to six months," that would mean something different. It's just a thought.
Additional discussion from the Commission? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No.
No.
Okay. Sorry about that. It looks like minor subdivision review is probably your best course of action. We will progress on with our next public hearing. This is the proposed Tandy family transfer. And we will begin with a staff report from Lauren Miller.
Lauren Miller, Planner with Community and Planning Services. This request today is from Cheryl Tandy to utilize the family transfer exemption to create and transfer one tract to her daughter. This tract is located off of Sherman Gulch Road, just west of the Big Flat area and the Clark Fork River. The tract is approximately 42 acres in size and has two existing dwelling units on the property. This proposal has been brought in front of the Commission before. The proposal was denied in 2017 with that lot layout on the left-hand side there. The original denial was based on the transfer to a spouse and the daughter. In a letter from the Commissioners regarding that denial, they... the Commission at the time said that the denial had weighed heavily on the quitclaim from both Cheryl and her husband to just Cheryl Tandy, and then trying to transfer a tract back to her husband. On the right-hand side here, the lot layout was proposed to the county Commissioners in 2018 to transfer 10 acres to her daughter. That was approved. The applicant's representative brought in a certificate of survey to be signed off on, and that layout showed more what we are looking at today, which will be on the screen here in a little bit. But it was to transfer 20 acres to her daughter. What they were approved for was for 10 acres. Staff felt that that was not compliant with what they were approved for, so that is why the proposal is coming back in front of you all today. The tract is Zoned CA2 and is designated as working lands by the 2019 land use element. The residential density for the zoning district is one dwelling unit per 10 acres. This proposed division would be compliant with that zoning. The working land designation recommends one dwelling unit per 160 to one dwelling unit per 40 acres. The existing development on the property already exceeds that density recommended, and this proposal would further increase that density. Here's that proposed parcel configuration that we are looking at today. The tracks would be a total of 20.26 acres and 22.10 acres. Tract one to be transferred to the applicant's daughter, and tract two would remain in Cheryl Tandy's ownership and contain both of the existing dwelling units. The applicant did indicate in the application that the tracks are to be used for residential purposes by the recipient. This proposal was sent to county agencies for review. The Missoula City County Health Department did note that they were unable to find any septic permit records for either of the homes on the property. I did verify this with the Health Department, and that doesn't necessarily mean that they don't exist, but that they may have been old enough that they were not able to find them on record. The Health Department did say that the owner should proactively address this issue. I did share this comment with the applicant's representative after we received it. So with this, the rebuttable presumptions and general evasion criteria were reviewed. The rebuttal presumptions triggered by the proposal was if a transfer of a tract by one family member to another by quitclaim deed is followed by an attempted use of the exemption on the same tract. And as noted from the previous, David Tandy and Cheryl Tandy transferred the tract to singular ownership of Cheryl Tandy. And if the division appears to be made for the purpose of speculation by the landowner, or for resale for the benefit of the landowner by using the grantee as a straw person, this may be indicated if the grantor and/or recipient own other tracks of land in Missoula County, or it is evident that the receiving family members do not intend to reside on the family transfer tract. Cheryl Tandy is listed as the owner of five other tracks within Missoula County. The general evasion criteria triggered was if the proposed division for this tract has been previously denied under review of the MSPA or any other exemption. As discussed earlier, this family transfer was denied by the county Commissioners on October 26 in 2017. At that time, the request was to split two 10-acre tracks from the parent parcel, one tract to the daughter, and one tract to Cheryl Tandy's husband. And if the proposed division was incompatible with the growth policy, as I stated earlier, the proposed division will result in two residential lots, the parent tract being 22.10 acres and 20.26 acres. The land use designation for this parcel recommends either one dwelling unit per 160 to one dwelling unit per 40 acres. With that, staff is recommending that the request by Cheryl Tandy to utilize the family transfer exemption to create and transfer one parcel be approved. I do have questions for the applicant, if they would like to come forward, please.
Would the applicant like to come to the microphone?
My name is David Tandy. I'm speaking for my wife Cheryl, who would rather not speak today. She just had eye surgery yesterday, so I can answer the questions.
Okay. Thank you. Did you buy the property with the intent of dividing it?
Not, other than giving property to our daughter, no.
Okay. Do you or your transferees intend to transfer the property within the next year?
No.
Have you talked to anyone at the county about going through subdivision review?
Years ago, we did.
Okay. And will the property be developed?
Our daughter is probably going to build a cabin there at some point, not immediately, but in the future, yes.
Okay. And will the recipient of the property be residing on the property?
Eventually, she... they may use it for a summer cabin, or something like that, yes. Who knows in the future, and they may live in there permanently. I don't know.
Thank you. That concludes my staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren, could you go back to one of those initial slides and just hit on us again the history of the family transfer reviews that have come before us previously?
Correct. So that lot layout on the left from 2017, originally, the tract was owned by both Cheryl and her husband, David, at the time. They then quitclaimed the parcel to, just to be in Cheryl's ownership, and proposed to transfer tract to her daughter, and then to the husband as well. That was denied. At that time, the Commissioners said if they came back with just a transfer to the daughter, that they would then approve the transfer. That is the lot layout that we see in 2018. That was approved. And like I said, the main reason we are back here today is they are now looking at transferring a little over 20 acres instead of just 10 acres. The subdivision regulations state that you need to be in compliance with what was in the subdivision exemption affidavit and approved by the Commissioners. We felt that 10 acres was exceeding what was approved originally, that that was something that needed to come back to you guys for approval, since it was quite a bit of acreage that was added to the original approval in 2018.
So basically, what we see on the right is what... well, that is what has been approved, so we would be adding... today, we're contemplating adding acreage to one of the tracks.
Correct, correct. There's a little bit of a different layout there.
Okay.
As you can see, it's kind of that top corner, and is now kind of divided down the...
It's changing the configuration of the tracks and the acreage, but not creating any additional tract that was not there previously.
Correct, yes.
And what were the site conditions, or why is it configured like this?
Do you have thoughts on the different configuration?
The way this map shows now?
Yes, proposed that way, yes.
Basically, our daughter had picked a building site, which is in the new shoe-shaped size there. And since we already have two other residences there, which we have as rental houses, we wanted to keep them in a separate parcel, but still use... the road is kind of a boundary area to, you know, give it a, you know, a definite boundary. That's how we ended up with this design for the split.
And where's her cabin going to be, or potentially going to be? Up in the northwest corner of the shoe?
Over in here, is that where you're...
Oh, over there.
Is that where you're looking at?
Yeah.
Okay, where the smell says, yeah.
Sorry.
No problem. And I will remind Commissioners that any tract that is over 20 acres is exempt from that sanitation and subdivision review as well.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Tandy?
Your daughter's a grown-up, right?
Yeah, she's like 32.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Any public comment on the proposed Tandy family transfer? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Additional questions from the Commission, or a motion?
Oh, Lauren, can I... can you show us a map again that zoomed out, and so we can kind of see the... yeah, thank you. The development in the area.
Yeah, and you can see, here's a cone of bridge right down here, just for reference. Yes.
Okay, thanks. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Do we have motion language, or is it recommendation language? All right. I would move that the request by Cheryl A. Tandy to utilize the family transfer exemption to create and transfer one parcel to her daughter, Kalen L. Anderson. We honor this request.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Hopefully, that configuration of the parcels will work. Okay. And my best of wishes with your eyesight on a sunny day like this. Okay, our next and final public hearing is a continuation of a public hearing that we opened up back in June of this year, June 13, I believe. This is the Corey Brown proposed family transfer, and we'll begin with an update from Lauren Miller.
Thank you. Still Lauren Miller, Planner. I was planning on running through this, just since Juanita is due to the Commission since last time, so I am going to run through it again like the first time. And it has been a couple months, so it'll be good to have a refresher. So this request is from Corey Brown to utilize the family transfer to create and transfer five tracks to his children, and to his father. As Commissioner Strohmeyer said, that this hearing is a continuation from a June 13 public hearing. The tract is located just west of the Y between Highway 10 West and I-90. The tract is unzoned and is 15.55 acres in size, and does not currently have any structures on it. The tract is accessed through a 60-foot-wide private roadway easement, which is just provided off of Highway 10 West. The tract is located within the 1998 Urban Comprehensive Plan area. This application was reviewed under the current land use designation at the time, which was open and resource designation, which recommends that one dwelling unit per 40 acres. To compare, the recently adopted land use designation is Planned Neighborhood. The goals of the Planned Neighborhood land use designation is to preserve development potential that accommodates a substantial portion of future growth until infrastructure is in place or planned. The proposed parcel configuration is shown here. The tracks range in size from 1.8 acres to 5.5 acres, being the largest tract in size. That remainder lot, the 5.5 acres, will remain in ownership by Corey Brown. The applicant has indicated in the application that the tracks are to be used for residential purposes by the recipients. The proposed family transfer does fall within a previously approved 32-lot major subdivision, the Canyon View Business Park. The applicant today was not the developer for the subdivision. This slide here shows you just a reference to compare the proposed family transfer lot layout compared to the lots that were approved within that subdivision. The blue portion of the proposed subdivision is in Phase 1. Shown here with the red line encompasses that family transfer proposal tract. And if the family transfer were to be approved, that Canyon View, that portion of the Canyon View Business Park that's encompassed by the tract would not be allowed to be filed. As with all requests, it was sent to county agencies for review. We did not see a majority... We did not see a majority of negative comments for the request. The Public Works Department did note that the newly created lots do not show any legal access, and that the remainder lot has a private access easement proposed, but lots 1 through 5 do not, and that they would recommend establishing a private access easement to gain legal access to those lots. The rebuttable presumptions triggered by the request today was if the landowner intends to divide land for the purpose of a gift or sale to the landowner's spouse and/or minor children. Four of the intended recipients are the landowner's children, who are minors. If the division appears to be made for the purpose of speculation by the landowner, or for resale benefit of the landowner by using grantee or as a straw person, that can be indicated if the grantor and/or recipient own other tracks of land in Missoula County. The applicant's father and one of the recipients of the tract, Mark Brown, is listed as owner of two properties in the Sealy Lake area. Additionally, the applicant, Corey Brown, is listed as the agent for M. Brown Holdings LLC and Brothers Brown LLC, which owns three tracks in the Missoula Industrial Park. Sorry, I was going to click through these for you guys, so you can read them. If the parent purports to act as a guardian and/or conservator for a minor child without establishing a trust, documentation of the trust has not been provided to assure that the property will be managed on behalf of the child and not the parent. If the proposed division of land is on a tract that was previously created through use of a family transfer exemption, mortgage security exemption, or occasional sale, or has received preliminary plot approval, as I stated earlier, the tract has received preliminary plot approval in 2008, and was previously created through a family transfer exemption in 1992. If the claimant is in the business of construction or dividing, developing, or selling land, the application did not indicate that the claimant is not in the business of construction or dividing, developing, or selling land. However, the claimant is listed on the MCC HD Certified Public Installer List under the business name of Reveal Excavation. The business website also lists that address as 9480 Inspiration Drive, which is owned by the claimant. If the original tract transferred to the claimant within the past two years, the tract was received by the claimant in November of 2018. If the property has been subject of a scoping or pre-app meeting for subdivision prior to application for the exemption, as we've talked about, the lot is part of the 32-lot major subdivision that was originally approved in 2008. The developer did do a phasing plan in 2010. The deadline to file that first phase, which encompasses this parcel, is December of 2021. And just to note that, the claimant today is not the developer of that subdivision. A division by exemption that affects or results in six or more tracks, each less than 160 acres, this division will result in six total tracks, which are all less than 160 acres. And if the requested exemption is unsuitable for the intended purpose or use of the division, the family transfer exemption is intended to provide a means to allow a single gift or sale of tracks outside of a plotted subdivision to a member of the landowner's immediate family. This request appeared to not be suitable for the purpose of the family transfer exemption due to the nature of the application. If the proposed division is incompatible with the growth policy, the division will result in six residential lots. The land use designation at the time of this review was open and resource, which is one dwelling unit per 40 acres. And finally, if the exemption would cause significant impacts relative to subdivision review criteria, that would likely lead to the imposition of significant conditions of approval or denial. And of course, any subdivision review would be required to review things such that would impact public health and safety. As a major subdivision, which is what this would be, non-motorized facilities would be required, along with additional road standards. Legal and physical access to the lots would be required and reviewed through the subdivision review process. As I stated earlier, this lot does not have direct access on Highway 10 West, and is accessed only by a private roadway easement from Highway 10 West, which may create some physical access issues if it were to be brought forward as a subdivision. The possibility exists that impacts on the natural environment and agricultural would be found, but further information would be required in order to find that. Staff is recommending that the request by Corey Brown to utilize the family transfer exemption to create and transfer five parcels be denied. And I do have questions for Corey again, if he would like to come forward. Or we, do we want to go through those?
Do we, do we need to do it again, since he did it previously?
I mean, the only reason I say that is if Juanita wants, but if you feel you have enough information, we do not need to go through those questions again.
I would like to talk on behalf of the project, Paul Forsting, Territorial Land Works. And Corey certainly can get up and do the questions again. I think we maybe wanted to get in more detail than what those questions had, and so Corey was worried those questions would just, you know, wouldn't give us an opportunity to maybe have a little more detailed dialogue about the project.
Did you want to?
So, go ahead. I mean, I wouldn't see it as an either-or. It'd be answering the questions again for Juanita's sake, and then diving into some more specific commentary, so.
If you don't mind answering the questions again, and then let's have dialogue.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. If you want to just state your name for the record, Corey. Did you buy the property with the intent of dividing it?
No.
Do you or your transferees intend to transfer the property within the next year?
No.
Have you talked to anyone at the county about going through subdivision review?
No.
And this first two set of questions is for if the recipient is not a minor, so your father. Will the property be developed? And will the recipient of the property be residing on the property?
Yes.
And questions for the minors are, do you have a trust established for the children to hold the property?
I have a letter from my attorney stating that he will, if approved, he will develop the trust accordingly.
Thank you. Who is the trustee of the trust, or who controls it?
Be Corey Brown, Ricky Brown.
Thank you. If the property is sold, will the money be held in trust?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the questions. Thank you, Corey.
Thank you. And a continuation of the public hearing. Is there any other public comment on this proposed family transfer before we get into discussion with the commission? Yeah, you can definitely comment, Paul, as the applicant's representative, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, as the applicant's representative, come on up, Paul, if you want to.
And you did. Paul, did you want me to click through your?
Could.
Okay. Okay. If you, okay. Okay.
Okay, all right. Paul Forsting, Territorial Land Works. I put together a couple slides, just to give a little context to this, where this project fits in with, I guess, all the other family transfers we've seen. And maybe I can even answer some questions about the original subdivision, David, if you had those. I was a junior planner at TLI 12 years ago, and so this project was one of the first projects I looked at. So I know a little bit about Canyon Breeze Business Park, but I wasn't the lead on it, but I can remember it, and even some of the history over the last 10 years, too. But stepping back to kind of this table that I put up here, I was able to find a, through the county records, you can see how many family transfers were filed in a given year. And so I went and looked at how many were filed. And filed, I put the steps of a process, a really simplified version here, so what I put on the board could make some sense to us. Step one is the commissioner's approval. There's probably 10 steps to get here, but this is, in my simplified world, you get commissioner's approval, and then after that, you do DEQ approval, a step two, and then the final step is you file it. And so what I'm showing you here is a table of the filed family transfers over the last three years. And that's just because I don't have data on actually, I think there's probably more than the filed ones. There's some that get approved by the commission and just never make it to being filed or aren't filed yet. Just wanted to point that out. But all I have access to is who actually got approval, and then went and completed it and filed it. So last year, 2018, we had eight of those total that were filed. From those filed projects, 24 lots were created. And as just an example, there were six subdivision proved all last year through the county. And with those six subdivisions that were approved, only 18 lots will be generated. And so when we say this family transfer looks like a subdivision, we might say this subdivision looks like a family transfer, because a family transfer is, for, you know, according to the last three years, the more prevalent use of a land dividing tool. Maybe, you know, maybe that's, we want to get that to zero. I don't know what the goal is, but the reason I'm bringing it up is because, you know, Corey didn't want to come here and not know if he was going to get approval or not, and I didn't want to guide him here with no expectation of his going to get approval or not. And it's, as we've seen here today with the hearings, it's hard to tell, you know, is this two-lot family transfer approvable, or is this two-lot family transfer not approvable? And now we've got a larger one here in front of you. But point being, you know, I try, we try our best to understand as consultants, what is approvable, what isn't approvable, and all we have is state law, and we have examples that the commission, you know, actions that the commission have done, and the actions the commission have done have approved a lot of family transfers. State law doesn't get into the detail that we get in in this conversation, but most counties around the state, you do a family transfer, you submit an application, you have eligible family members, you get approved of it. And so it's a little different in Missoula than most places. Even the city. The city of Missoula doesn't send you to the council for approval. They administratively approve these things. Point being, in all of that, it's not a very, it's not easy for these applicants to understand if their project is or isn't going to be approved. And even for the consultants, it's not easy for us to say, this is a good candidate or a bad candidate. We just look at the rules. We say, it's possible, and we send Corey in here to talk to you. And sometimes, sometimes they get approval, and sometimes they bring me back for the next hearing, and that's where we're at here today. So we look at it, we have a lot of, we have a lot of family transfers, we have very little subdivisions. And so guiding people towards the subdivision process is a difficult one, I think, for folks to swallow, because there's obviously something going on with subdivisions where people don't want to do that. I wouldn't call it evading, but I think they have another option, which is a family transfer, and it's, they're not apples to apples. A family transfer is a somewhat affordable process. A subdivision is a, very much a development-guided, you're going to do that, and you're going to end up with a big, you know, 50, 60, $100,000 loan of some sort, you know. It's going to be an intense thing that may make or break your family, and it's, you know, that family just got sent packing with the goal to do a subdivision. Well, that's going to be a really tough task, you know, it completely changes the dynamic of what can be done. And that's why people like the family transfer process. So maybe onto the second slide here. This is a six-lot family transfer that was filed at the very end of last year. So this is just before 2019. And in this case, the commissioners approved a family transfer for two sons, a daughter, and two mothers. And so, you know, if it was my property, it would be for my mother and then my mother-in-law. You know, this is what was approved, and, you know, it looks a lot like a subdivision to me. It's in that major category. It's got six lots here. So, you know, when I look at Corey's and I look at this one, I say they look really, really close. And this was filed last year. One, there's, this is a five-lot subdivision that was filed in October of last year. This is, somebody gave three parcels to their daughters, they gave another parcel to their wife, and then they kept a remainder for themselves. This is almost identical in design to ours, where it's got that center road. This is five lots, ours is six, so this would be technically a minor subdivision. But, yeah, with that, you can kind of, those are the, that's the kind of information we tell Corey, hey, I can't tell you you're going to get approved or denied, but this is what has been approved recently. Now we look at the site from an aerial, and as we look at the site, Corey's property itself was created through a family transfer. His neighbor's property was created through a family transfer. His neighbor to the north was created through a family transfer. His neighbor to the west was created through a family transfer. And to the east and southeast were through not a family transfer, something less than a family transfer, if you can believe that. There was a transfer available back, they used to have what was called an occasional sale. And that was, you didn't have to even claim that you were going to give it to a family member. You were just going to, you had this occasion where you were going to subdivide or use an exemption to divide your property. And that's what the two on the other side was. And so when you look at what Corey's planning on doing and how it fits in the neighborhood, well, the whole neighborhood was developed through exemptions and transfers. Right, wrong, or indifferent, he's not going to be changing too much in the neighborhood, because he's doing exactly what they did, and none of them went through subdivision review. One thing I'd also mention is that they're, it's surrounded by homesites that are relatively similar to what Corey's planning on doing. So, you know, it's not, it's not that he's going to put a bunch of houses in the middle of a kind of vacant area. It's an area that was approved for commercial use, but it's also compatible for residential. And these are nice houses that people have out here. Corey, I believe, has a sincere, I guess he's sincere when he says that his dad's going to build there quickly, and he wants to have an opportunity for his other family members, daughters and kids, to live out there with him. And I guess that's all I really had to add to it, and I can answer any questions he had on the subdivision. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
For the new commissioner, can I make a statement to you?
Sure, go ahead.
On some of that application, I don't own any other properties. This is the only property I own. I'm just, and we clarified this on the last hearing, but I'm just a registered agent. I file all my dad's annual reports. My grandpa, dad, and uncle were all business partners, and I think they had five pieces of land up at the Y. There's three parcels that are all together on Inspiration, and then two right in front of RDO. So my grandpa passed, then it left my, that's why you see the Brothers Browns, those are the brothers, my uncle and my dad. And I just do all their annual filing, and now my uncle's passed, so it's just my dad that has those ownerships. He has always lived out down below the Y on Malum Lane, and I think the other one was Equestrian. So this is like within like a half a mile radius, you know, of each house he's ever been lived in since I moved here in Gee's fifth grade, so I'm not even sure how, you know, what year that was. My brother's just a half mile down the road. We import and wholesale fireworks is my main employment, and that is at Inspiration Drive, which is, again, maybe a mile down the road. So I did not list my, I call it kind of my hobby business. I do it because I love it, digging on the side. So I go eight to three every day doing fireworks, and after that, I do some excavation, so I'll try to kind of tidy that up a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks for that explanation.
And is there any further public comment before we move on? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Questions from the commission? Juanita?
Yeah, I'm a, can you explain the, what's the status of the subdivision, or the previous subdivision to the east?
Right, so.
Or maybe, Paul, was that what you were talking about earlier?
Yeah, and I can go back to the slide here. So, the original subdivision was approved back in 2008. At the time, woo, sorry. At the time, it, you know, was the one large parcel there, and it, when the developer came back for a phasing plan extension, that's how we got these three different phases here. The portion of Corey's family transfer parcel is that area in red, which is the Phase 1, which has a deadline of 2021 to be filed. If the commission were to approve this family transfer today, the developer would not, basically that, that portion of the subdivision would go away. So, and obviously, it's a little bit different boundaries than what was, so it would essentially mess with the kind of entire subdivision. The developer has since obviously sold both of the parcels, so I don't have any indication that he ever really wants to come back and file these. Paul, I don't know if you have any more background, other than?
Paul, why don't you come on up to the mic?
Other than that, but it appears that with the way he's sold off the lots multiple times, that he probably doesn't have any intention in coming back to file.
Paul Forsting, Territorial Land Works. It was, this project was originally proposed by a gentleman named R.C. Hobbs, and he was a developer, and he had both parcels on a development kind of arrangement, and I don't even know what that was, but the plan was to develop it all as one site. He then determined that it was financial, well, the, two things happened. One, the economy took a big nosedive in that, in that time, and so just kind of doing development projects was difficult. And then two, when we, even as things got better, projects, a lot of projects, folks have come to us and said, hey, can I do this? What's it going to cost? And the cost isn't there. There's not going to be any money made if they pave the roads as they're required to do for commercial use. I mean, yeah, it's just not financially feasible. And unfortunately, we have a lot of projects out there, lots and lots of them out there, that fall within this category. You know, it's a tricky thing about entitled lots that are out there. There's a lot out there that, there's one across the, there's bent grass meadows right across, which is very difficult to be developed if it was financially feasible, and that's 80 houses. It's right across the, to Highway 10 there.
Right. Yeah, and I know Commissioner Strohmeyer, you had a lot of questions during the last hearing about, you know, Right. Yeah, and I know Commissioner Schrameyer, you had a lot of questions during the last hearing about, you know, if Corey were to come and essentially use this sort of approval, and, and staff discussed that, and we believe it wouldn't be in the best interest of doing so, just because the track doesn't encompass the entire entirety of that phase one. There'd be some lot lines that would need to be moved around, and just because it was approved for commercial, not any residential, that we would advise that that wouldn't be the best, best way forward for this, so.
Okay, thank you. Juanita, did you have some follow-ups?
So what is the status now of the green and pink?
Right, so those could still essentially be, those phases could still be, or with the.
Once one part of the parcel's gone, it's, it's gone. It's, it's not a subdivision anymore that's approved. That's my understanding.
Yeah.
Looking at it, but that's, we've talked about that in the past.
Okay, okay, yeah. So it would all, the entirety of that subdivision, that can't, would be.
And I think everybody's fine with that. The date, it's still active on paper.
Right, but just, yeah, like I had stated earlier, the way that the, the original developer has sold off, you know, multiple times, it, it doesn't appear that he has any interest in, in filing the subdivision.
Okay, so now the entirety of that, the pink and green and the is owned by?
Right, well, Corey does not own the parcel to the, let me go to a better, yeah.
Sorry, pink and green and the far eastern blue.
Gosh. Um, yeah, so that other portion, sorry, this is kind of far out, is that other larger lot. Corey does not own that, that parcel. He only owns that parcel, but that portion that the subdivision is on would, would not be filed.
So basically, the entire subdivision would essentially be defunct if we approved this one portion for the family transfer, or if the final plat deadline in twenty-one, twenty-one passes.
Pass, yes, that's the way I understand it.
Does the owner of that, that subdivision know this?
Um, I'm a.
The owner, he, he's a half owner in the subdivision. Corey has to sign off. The guy can't just come subdivide it, so to speak. Everybody has to consent on doing anything.
Right, now that he isn't the.
It's my understanding that kind of the partnership, it's all dissolved. You know, the, the only thing that's left is the, the date on paper that says it's still alive.
Right. But Corey would have to give his.
Correct.
Approve, since he is now part owner of that subdivision, in a way, of the land.
I could, I could, on that being developed, it, yeah.
Right.
Thanks. Got a couple of questions for Corey. Would you mind coming up? So Corey, how old are your kids?
From eight, nine, nine down to three, or two and a half-ish.
So I guess what I'm trying to wrap my mind around is the likelihood that if you transfer to them, even if there's a trust, that those kids are actually going to want to live on those parcels fifteen years or more from now, and if, if, since the, well, why not just wait another decade or, or so until they are adults and then transfer it to them?
I guess the idea is too, for them, it's, it's in a trust, and then they can do it, they can sell it as they want to when they become of age and go to college. You know, it's an opportunity them, for them to have money, because, you know, to pay for whatever endeavor they want, maybe start a business, like I said, go to college. And right now, this is an opportunity, and I'd like to utilize it if possible. Tomorrow, who knows what the legislature does. I mean, I don't, I don't know the history of, like as Paul just showed, there is one where you could do whatever, what'd you call it, a quick sale or something like that, and you know, and then that's gone. So I guess I don't know what tomorrow brings, and right now, it, it's an opportunity that we can give to our kids and to my dad, and so.
So do you have any intent of building anything on those parcels that are in the name of your kids?
I, I'm planning on building my house on the remainder, and my dad plans on building his, on his parcel, and then the kids would sit in the trust undeveloped.
So until they're adults, there would be nothing constructed on their parcels?
Correct.
Mr. Brown, the, the last time you were here, you expressed some concern that the structures that would be built, and it sounded like in the near term, on the adjacent parcels might not be of high quality.
Oh, I, yeah, I'd like to, I, I think it's reasonable to put in a, a deed. I heard you can put in a deed restrict, like a, a restriction on what, what could be built. So like, as far as like no modulators would be, I can have that. Is that correct, Paul?
Yeah.
I think you can put something in there, and, and that's simply what I'm looking for. I'm not looking for a full-blown covenants. You know, I just want to put, you know, some, some kind of restriction, because if one of my child does sell the land, you know, that's where, that would come in nice to know that.
Just for me, hearing that, it just doesn't sound like that type of concern is consistent with your stated desire not to sell these pieces.
I, I guess it, sorry.
You know.
This is Paul. Do you want to get that, Paul? I may not be saying it clearly.
Paul Forsting, Territory Land Works. And, and Corey mentioned that to me, and he's, I guess, been, the whole process is, as you can imagine, somewhat intimidating to folks. You know, we've had some good speakers here today, and so it doesn't, you know, I can't say that they, they had a hard time, but it's relatively difficult for folks to get up here and say stuff. And I don't think Corey meant to say that he's got, he's got, wants covenants. I think he was just trying to be, to, I think somehow he, he got to the question of what the quality of the buildings would be on the site, which is somewhat of an unusual question. And he said, well, he doesn't want mobiles there. And it is unusual, but I think generally, almost anybody I talk to that has property and then is going to sell off a piece, is going to put that same restriction on there. And so although it's a little weird for you to do that for your kids, you know, Corey mentioned that his kids could sell it. I mean, they could turn eighteen. The family transfer rule was put in place so you could help your family in many ways. It wasn't put there so you could only build a house for your, you know, for your son on a property. It's for estate planning and other things. And, you know, for me, I don't, I don't have a ton of money saved up for my kids at college yet. I wish I did, and I'm proud to say that, but I might somehow be able to get a family transfer approved at some point, and maybe that's what Corey's going to do for his kids. And at eighteen, they, they go and sell this property, and that what they don't want it to be sold for is a mobile that's going to go right next to his house and right next to his dad's house. And so I'm not trying to cut Corey off there, I just wanted to.
No, no, and I, I think too, I, we had a discussion, I think lasted over an hour and fifteen minutes, I think was our last hearing. And I just, I mean, we're just talking, you know what I mean, and I was hopefully being as honest as possible, and, I mean, yeah, in the back of my mind, I would, if my kids decide to sell, I can't force them to build a house and live there, you know, after it's transferred to them, but I would like to know that somebody just couldn't come in there and, yeah, put a modular next to me. So I guess that's, that's the only, I'm not looking for full-blown covenances, and you got to have fences and color schemes, and I mean, list what a normal covenants is, so.
Okay, thank you.
And, and if I remember right, in our, in our exchange when you brought that up last time, that wasn't in response to me saying, what kind of houses do you want? Mr. Brown just brought that up and said, oh, and I want it to look nice there. And then I thought,
Well, I think we are talking what's your plan, and I was just like, well, I'd like, I'd like to live, I think everybody would say, for the most part, I'd like to live in a nice neighborhood, you know, and that's kind of, I think where we're, that's where that went to.
For sure. Living in a nice neighborhood just sounds different to me than, I'm just going to hold on to this property for ten, fifteen years, and then my kids will sell it off so they can go to college or start a business? It really sounds like you're anticipating a neighborhood, which looks to me like subdivision.
At some point, I mean, my daughter is nine years old. I mean, we're, we're right there. She's, you know, next time I turn around, she'll be eighteen, and then she will have control of the trust, and she can do what she would like. And that's, that's where that came about, is, that's where that comment came from, I guess, so.
And I hear you. I want to live in a nice.
Tell me, I didn't mean it like.
I want to live in a nice neighborhood too. I think it's a super valid concern, and there are really good ways to get there. So especially given that you are the owner right now, to ensure that the people who live nearby you maintain a certain level of quality. But when you spoke about, I want to make sure this is a nice neighborhood, that doesn't sound to me like holding on to property for ten years. It sounds like creating a neighborhood, which sounds like subdivision. I mean, Paul, do you hear where I'm coming from?
Thanks. One point of clarification. So in the, under general evasion criteria, one thing I want to be clear on, Lauren, is the, the question that asks, is the proposed division incompatible with the growth policy? And while, I just don't know how germane it is anymore to cite open and resource in that we have an updated land use map that, while technically speaking, this might have been in effect at the time of application, we currently have a different expectation. So could you just clarify what, what is out there right now on our land use map?
Right, so that planned neighborhood from the land use element recommends eight units per acre or greater, depending on sewer availability. So, and I talked at length with Andrew Hagmeyer and Christine in our office, so I made sure I understood what this land, the intent behind this land use designation is. And so a higher density recommended, but really to preserve the development potential for once that infrastructure is in place here. So the, the density, that higher density is sort of based on the availability of that infrastructure coming to this area. So we, you know, once that infrastructure is available, we could see a, a higher density recommended in this area.
Okay, thank you.
All right, can you zoom out again? Can we see, this is going to be the wrong map. Can you overlay the land use element?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we can kind of see what the land, and any way to zoom out there so we can see.
Um, yeah, let me open up. Nope, you're totally fine. Let's go to that. Oh, gosh, this.
I just want to see where planned neighborhood is in that area.
I just.
That would be in Western Europe there.
Okay.
Let's do it. This mouse is not. So really, it's encompassed by quite a bit of that planned neighborhood designation, the rural residential and egg, and then also the industrial center area, you see. So sewer is pretty close to this area and could potentially be expanded out into that area in the near future, but Andrew is very clear in that that higher density development in these areas shouldn't really be proceeded with until there is that infrastructure put in place.
And where's sewer?
Turn on that layer for you as well. Nope, you're totally fine. So that yellow line right there that you see pop up on the screen, right there, that's as far as sewer and water is extended out to right now. So very much the potential for that to be expanded.
And I guess because there's so many kind of bolds in, with the evasion criteria review, have, I don't really understand the process with an applicant and, and working with staff. Is there a way that the applicant can work through this to have, I mean, to be able to have a proposal that will be recommended for approval before it gets this far? Basically, get it, ask your question of what, what do I need to do to get something approved? Or is this the right tool? Maybe this isn't the right tool, so what is the right tool?
Right, I mean, you know, a developer or an applicant can come to us and say, I, I have this idea. Can I come down and sit with you and walk this through? You know, if we were to maybe meet ahead of time on this, I probably would have forewarned, saying, you know, eh, this looks a little iffy here. I don't know about the likelihood of us recommending approval on it. You know, if an applicant, you know, we'd be more than happy to sit down, and if people give us proposals, we can do our best to, to give them an answer. Of course, it's ultimately going to be up to, to the commissioners, but really, it's, you know, we're handed the application, and then we're just going through that set of criteria based on the application. We don't really have a lot of back and forth with the applicant ahead of time, you know, to discuss those. We're just really going off of that application that we get.
And, and I, I totally get it. This is a relatively inexpensive way to divide one's land compared to subdivision, which I think we all know is, is, can be significantly expensive. To a point that you made earlier, Paul, I also get it in terms of the desire for predictability on behalf of both property owners and, and developers. I'm quick to add, though, that we have a different commission here today than we did a couple of months ago or a few years ago. So it's to be expected that there are going to be different viewpoints in terms of how to apply the specific guidance that we have to specific cases on the ground. So as much as I would like to say from now on into eternity, there's going to be absolute predictability. There's enough discretion and, and decision space on the part of governing bodies that I don't think that's, well, I don't think we want to be arbitrary and capricious by a long shot. Predictability can take different forms based on who's sitting up here. Juanita, do you have anything else?
No, just that there's a lot of bolded concerns.
Right.
There are.
And, and so then it's like frustrating for, right, so I, so I don't want to be like making a decision, this is the end-all, be-all. This is more of a, okay, this proposal isn't quite right. We're not there yet, or, and.
I see. Uh, yeah, and just as.
Resolve the, I'm not, we're not quite there yet, can result in a few options. One, we take action today, which sends something, if we're, if we're not okay with it, it sends it back to the drawing board, or an applicant could certainly reel in his or her proposal or take more time to modify it. Corey, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I think we kind of discussed that redoing the application. We had mentioned that in the pre-hearing meetings, but then it kind of, I think John thought it'd be a good idea to, to see this through on the record to a point. So it would be something I'd be more than happy to redo, like to get some of those, you know, like the property owner things, like clarified and things, things like that on the app. So again, I'd be more than happy to do that as well.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, Commissioner Raro, you know, you look at this and you go, oh my gosh, look at all this bold. But as a reminder, for that first one that we looked at, there was two things that were triggered, triggered on there, and it was still. So it's really, you know, it's not weighted on how many bold, you know, it can be one thing, or it can be ten things. It's very much in the unique situation of each of these. So just as a, a thought as well, yeah. I know that it can look, you go, wow, there's a lot of bold in there.
Okay, more questions, or the, the motions that are before us today are either to approve or deny, so. Josh?
Sure, this is for either one or both of you guys. I'm just going to quote the Attorney General again. "The exemptions to the Subdivision and Plating Act were not provided to allow a developer to create a division of land which is for all intents and purposes nothing less than an unreviewed subdivision. Rather, they were provided to deal with exceptional circumstances under which plenary subdivision review is unnecessary." Are there, if there are exceptional circumstances, please.
Any family transfer can go through subdivision. That person you just approved, he could have come through subdivision. You would have just sent him, you would have just sent him through a very expensive review process. But there's nothing exceptional about that person's request, nor was there anything exceptional about the other ten. They just chose a process, and they said the right words, and they got the right commissioners on the right day, and they got the thing approved. That's what it is. And when he's asking about redoing his application, he will do that. We've had an application for a five lotter here, and they said, you know, they ran this in, and we brought, denied it, and we brought a three, three lot family transfer in for another family, and that was approved. And I think Corey's getting at that, as he takes his dad off. I mean.
I would like to say my dad.
He would really like to build it. I mean, hey, you could say that with great, you know, that's, he really wants to build his dad a house there. I mean, he wants to build his house, dad a house there immediately. That's a new standard, I guess, Josh, to, to be asked that. Commissioner Solnik, that what is exceptional about this? We get that in variances. That's always the thing, you know, what's unique about you? And it's, it's almost impossible to say that, well, you're, you know, we couldn't go through subdivision. Of course, we could go through subdivision. There's nothing unique about our project that wouldn't allow us, that subdivision wouldn't take care of, but there is a, a rule that allows you to give property to your family members. And it's, I think it's a pretty good tool, and people really appreciate it here in our county, and we're, we're building on all of our lots, and people, I mean, it's one way to, one way for family members to find, it's really difficult for people. one way to, one way for family members to find, it's really difficult for people to find lots for their family, I think.
Although I think what you might be sensing is there's renewed interest in taking seriously the Attorney General's opinion as it relates to exceptional circumstances, which may not have been valued as much in the past.
Yeah, and, and we're gonna need a little guidance on what those are and, and, you know, I think the exceptional here would be his family wants to live in one area, they want to, although we can't project that his kids will do that in six years, um, he would like that and that's, I think, a pretty exceptional, pretty cool thing. Um, but is there, you know, is, is he gonna pass away in six months? No, I don't think so. Nor do I think a subdivision can get approved in six months, but, um, uh, anyhow, no, I don't know of any, other than just kind of, if you can derive something from a person's request to, 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 to want to divide properties, exceptional, I don't, I don't know, you know, where to take that standard.
Thank you. Additional questions or I would entertain a motion? To approve or to deny?
There's one up on the screen too.
You could recast what's on the screen, just in terms of the Board of County Commissioners doing this or that.
I would move, we deny their request for this family transfer.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I would, uh, just reiterate that, uh, I think it's going to behoove future folks coming before us with family transfers to make the case that exceptional circumstances actually occur and my worry in this particular one, given the number of lots that are being contemplated, it certainly looks like the sort of thing that has the potential for impacts that ought to be reviewed in a more, uh, subdivision, uh, like review process, um, as opposed to the streamlined family transfer process that we see here today. Any further discussion?
Uh, I would say the number of lots, the age of the children, uh, these things are red flags for me and, and, uh, I feel bad for you that in order to get where you need to go, it's gonna cost more money, but I feel like it matches with what the Attorney General has said, it looks a lot more like the law and feels like the right thing to do. Uh, I can hear you saying, Paul, it's a roll of the dice. In my mind, this is not a roll of the dice, the roll of the dice is which commission you get, well, we got this one for the next four or five years. So within that time, I don't think there's dice rolling, I think it's fairly predictable. If it looks like a subdivision, we'll call it a subdivision, so, but thanks.
And we, and I just wanna reiterate, we take this very seriously. We're not sitting up here flipping coins. Uh, we recognize that folks have invested time and energy and money to get to the point of being in this room, but we're also looking out, uh, for the public interest and, uh, and public good across Missoula County in general and are endeavoring to be as consistent, uh, and rational in our process as possible.
I just wanna add, I really hope to spend, that you can spend more time with staff to alleviate the frustration, cause it's frustrating to watch how frustrated you guys might be, so I hope we can get to something.
Sure, come on up.
So what does a, what does someone like me do that has a, a large family? I mean, you know, I'm kinda up against a hill there, you know what I mean? Because one person walks in, they have one child, I come in, I got four, it just, there's not much I can do about that. So I, I, I'm just wondering, how do I, how do I circumvent that or how do I, you know what I mean? Cause that's.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any easy answer to circumventing it and, uh, um, and there is the situation of cumulative impacts, uh, if someone comes in here with 10 or 12 kids, uh, I mean, uh.
Yeah, same thing applies to them, it's just, I mean, they'd be fighting a bigger uphill battle than myself, trying to put you guys at ease about, you know, the quantity of lots being developed.
Yeah, I mean, the downside of it.
I came in with one kid and my dad, it probably, I mean, it would probably be easier.
I mean, the downside of it, coming in for six lots or five lots, looks like a major subdivision and it's an unfortunate thing that a large family with one piece of land divided up accordingly, so each person gets a chunk of ground, that looks like a subdivision and, uh.
To me, the exceptional circumstance is the fact that I'm gonna financially be giving my kids a future. I mean, that's to me key. This might not be available and so if I have to go through subdivision review, I mean, talking with Paul lately, um, I'm looking at a substantial cost that for my dad, one, he can't go build right away and then two, I gotta, it looks like I'd have to absorb all the costs of that infrastructure, which would negate any financial gain to my children with those lots. So that, that's the idea of the family transfer and going into a trust and the kids can do what they want. Um, I mean, right now, I work, I work two jobs basically, so it's like, there's not, you know, hey, a couple thousand bucks going into the kids' college funds, things like that. This land opportunity was the gift, so anyways, that, that's my circumstance, but thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, the motion before us, which has been seconded, is to deny. We've had discussion and, uh, public comment, all in favor? Aye. Was opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. So that, uh, is our final public hearing today. Is there any other business to come before the commission? Uh, oh, another public comment, okay.
No.
A bookend.
Well, it's under other business.
Sure, okay.
Okay. Uh, I was here two, three months ago for a boundary relocation. Uh, the, the boundary relocation was approved, we went from one acre lots to 10 acre lots and the health department is holding up the filing of this. Boundary relocations are exempt from subdivision review and the county clerk and recorder said they won't file it until John Hart gives them a letter and John's not here, he's on vacation for a couple weeks. This boundary relocation was to resolve five lawsuits that I have against the state in a settlement and the filing of it needs to happen immediately. The health department is saying that I evaded subdivision, so I have to go through sanitation review. I would like a meeting with the commissioners and the, my attorney and the county attorney to try to resolve this without having to file another lawsuit to get this done. I'm just really frustrated with the whole process, so I would request a meeting with the commissioners when your next administrative hearing or meeting is with, that's any kind of a public meeting that we can bring the attorney and we can talk about it and see if there's a resolution. We might be able to get it filed, do a sanitary review that satisfies the health department. These are 10 acre lots, I don't wanna pick a spot where somebody has to put their drain field on a 10 acre lot, has to be there. The whole thing is homogenous. DEQ's already done their review on one of the previous subdivision applications. I've tried to go through subdivision application numerous times and been denied every single time and this is my retirement and I'd like to retire. I'm 70 now and I'd like to be able to get some retirement out of the property that I bought going on 14 years ago to do this, so. Anyway, I'm asking the commissioners to have a meeting that we can try to resolve this and avoid another lawsuit.
So unless Mac has any insight, uh, we may need to wait until John Hart gets back and we'll confer with him and be in touch about next steps, uh, that's.
Yeah, it's gotta happen before that. I've gotta get an injunction from a judge to get it filed, so if we have to do that, we'll do that.
Mac, could you turn your mic on there, please?
Sorry, John's out through next week, so if we can wait one more week, he'll be back.
Okay, I, I can wait a week.
Okay.
But I gotta do it quick. The, the lawsuits that got resolved at the state are 10 years old now and we signed a settlement three years ago, this is part of getting it done.
Okay, if you can hold off any more lawsuits for a week?
I'll hold off.
Okay, uh, we'll touch bases with John and be in touch, how about that?
And, you know, I'd really like to have a meeting when he gets back with my attorney, me, you guys and John and let's get this figured out. There's gotta be a way to get it done so I can get those filed and it's done. And like I said, the, the soils, the sanitation, the, there is no groundwater on these lots, it's way up on a bench. The groundwater testing has been done years ago, there wasn't an issue with any groundwater issue, there was an issue with soils being bad, being tight, it was, everything was done. DEQ was ready to write the approval letter on the first subdivision for 119 lots, had the commissioners approved the subdivision, they were ready to write the approval letter. And I can get an affidavit from the guy that was the head of the department saying that if, if you guys need to see that. The, all the soils data, everything has been provided, it's just, the health department is trying to hold up the progress. It's not about having an issue there.
Well, and, and I think you probably know, John, we don't supervise the health department, so, uh.
I understand that, but you guys are the ones that get sued if the health department.
Well, there, there is, there is that, so, uh.
And I wanna avoid that.
So the best we can, yeah, we, we like to avoid lawsuits too, if we can, um, so the best we can do is we'll confer with John Hart upon his arrival back and get back to you with next steps.
Okay, well, I'd like a meeting immediately after he gets back.
No, we, we get that, uh.
Okay.
So let us, let us do some, uh, conferring on our end.
Yeah, do you have a, a calendar of when your administrative hea- meetings are that are open to the public?
Yeah, and, and you're always welcome to those, even if it's not a special meeting, so Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays of most weeks, uh, from, uh, from 10 to 11 a.m. are our administrative public meetings.
Okay.
You can always come to those, check in advance, sometimes, uh, we might be having to cancel it for something else.
Okay, all right, so as soon as John gets back, I'm sure he'll be in contact with Tom Orr, so we'll try to do the Tuesday after he gets back.
Mac, can you ensure that John, uh, is aware of this?
We'll absolutely make sure John's aware of this.
Okay.
I know he'll get to this as quick as he can, sir, he's, he's on family vacation and I know he's not trying to hold you up at all.
Right, no, and I'm, I'm willing to wait for him.
Okay.
Okay, they told me he's gonna be gone for two weeks, so I'm thinking two weeks.
Well, he's been gone for one week now, so I believe he's got one more week and then he'll be back, that's my understanding. If I'm, if I'm off by a week, you might have to wait another couple days, I'm sorry.
He may wish he was gone another week once he returns, but, okay, thanks, John. Uh, with no further business, we'll be adjourned.